Time I thought people were saying pache, like as in peace, which would make sense.
Going live, just so you know.
Posse, my posse.
No, my posse.
Okay, here we go. It's ours.
Oh, it's mine.
Are we on, Gabe?
We are live, yep, so you guys can share it and then I'll start the commercial in just a second.
Do, 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 do. Boop.
Someone should show me. Go, oh.
Support for Wrong About Everything comes from Minnesota's credit unions. Credit unions are locally based, member owned financial cooperatives that return earnings to members through higher savings rates, lower loan rates, and reduced fees. Visit mncun.org for more information.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to another episode of the Wrong About Everything podcast. I am Republican strategist and Twin City Sugar, Brian McDaniel.
I am former Republican Senate Majority Leader Amy Koch.
I am Minneapolis Culture Correspondent Allison Nessie.
I am Democratic strategist on the Puerto Rican heat, Javier Murillo.
And we are.
Wrong About Everything.
I just find it endlessly amusing that we have a cultural correspondent.
I've gotten good feedback from some listeners. Am I, is my mic?
It's on Tini.
You need to eat it. Eat the mic.
Hello?
Wait, is, no, you need to turn it on first.
Oh, oh, there you go. Cool, cool, cool. Thanks for having me for the first time.
That's great.
Really excited.
We decided to add a cultural correspondent from the city of Minneapolis.
I remember from the past, in fact.
You know.
I feel like you've heard from her before.
We have a new old timey guy now. Did you listen to the show when Franklin was on? He did Old Timey Voice?
Uh, nobody, he should do it.
Yeah, he did.
That's his, that's his thing.
Cause yeah, John Stiles said he missed him, so.
Oh, oh. Well, everybody, welcome to the Minnesota Credit Union Network Studios, deep within the recesses of MBC Studios here in northeast Minneapolis. We got Gabe Noah, our lovely, talented, capable producer in the other room. And we hope you're watching us. You watching us? We hope you're watching us. Uh, go to our YouTube channel. We would like you to like and subscribe and send it to your friends, enemies, neighbors. Anyone else you can think of. We would like that very much, so.
Fat family.
And families.
Enemies.
Frenemies.
Friends of yours who've never been on a podcast before, you know, everyone. This will be, you know, cultural correspondent.
You guys, I genuinely have state fair withdrawal this year.
You know what? I was gonna add that, like, I was gonna be coming down, the state fair, the post-state fair edition.
I genuinely have like this, like, I kept thinking, like, yesterday, I was like, oh, I should go to the fair to do, I'm like, oh, I can't anymore. It's done.
It was such a good year. The weather has never been better.
Yeah.
It was just.
It was very, it was cool as you, as one walked around. Um, yeah, I just, I really enjoyed it. And I got a hat that said, uh, State Fair Daddy.
You did?
Yeah.
Where'd you get that?
Huh?
Did someone hand it to you? Just walking down the street. I assume that happens to you.
Yes, yes, yes. In fact, I think that is exactly how it happened. Um, so, so the funniest thing, so I was with, I was with Peggy and, and Shabon and, um, and Tom, and I got the hat and then Shabon's like, why'd you get that hat? And I said, well, you know, I'm, I'm Trulo's daddy. And she goes, and she says, that's not what that means. And I was like, we were like, so what does it mean?
That's what Shabon says?
Yes, Shabon, and she, she says.
Much smarter now because of the internet.
Yeah, I know. And so, so he said, what do, what does it mean? And she said, what it means is if Tom wore it, I'd puke, like her stepdad. If you, I'm like, oh, you really know what it means.
I was actually gonna.
Use that in, in a sentence.
Yeah.
My follow up was, was Tom also giving it.
No, no, he was not giving one. Cause next year I'm going for State Fair Daddy.
Our little Shabon is all grown up.
He's all grown up. It's like she knows what daddy means.
She, she might need to emancipate herself.
Yeah.
If she does, she should contact our good friends at Bradshaw and Bryant.
Do they do that? Are they expanding their services?
You should contact them and find out.
Find out. Consultations are free. Why wouldn't you ask them?
If nothing else, they could give her a referral.
Yes.
Uh, their entire team of attorneys and staff is dedicated to providing the legal advice you need, combined with the service and personal attention you deserve. If you have questions about how they can assist you with a personal injury, wrongful death, or criminal defense matter, please do not hesitate to contact them. Consultations are free. Contact, contact them at 800-770-7008, or at minnesotapersonalinjury.com.
You know, I was just gonna say, we, I was, we should ask Mike if we could, we could vary up the, uh, the copy, but, but I see you were doing that.
Yeah.
By reading it badly.
Poorly, Mr. Yale. Anyway, and here, here I am about to feed you, uh, the opportunity to talk about yourself. So you were talking about how much you missed the fair. Uh, I did not get to, uh, witness, see, or hear the low stakes debate that the two of you were in. Well, uh, how did that go?
Oh, it was lovely. Did you know they played it on the air, Amy? They did.
Okay, well, I, I think I got some Google alerts on us.
But on Monday, on Monday of this week, yeah, because someone, someone tech that posted on Facebook.
It was really actually a fun low stakes debate.
It was, it was very fun.
Totally didn't matter. It was all about the state fair and like animal barns versus midway.
So I was right. I was like casserole or hot dish and it was, okay.
It was like, it was a corn dog or, or a hush puppy or.
Yep. And we did not get to choose.
That's a high stakes.
We didn't get the questions out of time and we didn't get to choose what side we took.
Yeah, no.
So, so it was like debate. Argument for things that maybe you didn't believe in. Like I had to argue for more pickle stuff at the fair.
Yeah.
It's like, I don't even eat pickles. I hate pickles.
Can I just say, so.
The evidence was found in those four search warrants by Minneapolis police.
Not me.
Can someone turn off their phone?
Usually he would kill me for this.
It's, it was Brian.
Oh, he would be glaring at me right now.
Glaring you anyway.
Wait, can I tell you something? So about the, my favorite answer of my own answers was when they asked.
Oh, what was that? I was so hilarious.
I was, no, it was, it was, it was not funny. It was just, it was just vivid was, um, they, it was whether the two sides were the grandstand or the, the free band sta, ban, the show, the band shells and stuff. And, and I said that the, in the band shells, you can see Minnesota as it was, as it is, and as it will be.
Yes.
And I got extra points for being poetic.
But then who won?
Yeah, Amy, Amy won because, well, they literally gave, they literally subtracted points for me. They literally subtracted points for me because I'm not from here.
Well, that is the most Minnesota thing I've ever heard.
That's not how they phrased it, but that's what they meant.
That's, that's. I don't know if.
It was that Catherine. Oh, yeah. Catherine, Catherine said like, well, you didn't draw on your childhood. My childhood was in Puerto Rico. I, I don't have bucolic memories of the state fair.
That's what we do in Minnesota, though.
Share bucolic memories of the state fair?
No, we're just like, well, you weren't born here. You're still not friends with your friends from kindergarten. So like, are you real?
Oh, I'm fully aware. I'm fully aware that, that, that there is a limit to my Minnesotan-ness and it's just went right up there, even on NPR.
But I'm not friends with my friend from kindergarten because Karakwin can suck it.
See, but you still have hatreds from kindergarten. So, so, yeah, you kind of made her point. You kind of made her point.
But she knows what she did.
She knows what she did.
I'd like to circle back real quick to the pronto pup or the corn dog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I said neither. I, I said, give me zeros because they both stink. Who wants to put dough on a hot dog and slather it with mustard and ketchup and eat it?
She argued for milk.
Zero for it.
She argued for milk and I argued for wine slushies, obviously.
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 Right. I mean, what were they supposed to do there?
I would like the record to reflect, as much as I like to destroy my friend Amy Koch for, and pretty much everything about her, she is 100% right about corn dogs for pronto pups.
False.
Neither.
Thank you. I got points for, for stating the truth from that.
The pronto pup is one of the top three best things at the state fair. And there's always a line, so I am not alone.
See, I, you know, okay, so two things. I actually prefer a corn dog, but don't get mad. Don't get mad. Relax, settle down. But, okay, the Amish, the Amish donuts.
No, not working the line. I've had.
There's a mile long line. Also, those Amish people had electricity. That booth had electricity. Those were not Amish donuts. That's cultural appropriation. That was, there's no way.
I had them last year. They're, they're fine, but they're not that great.
Do they, oh, they weren't new this year?
No.
Why they have mile long lines?
Uh, they did last year too.
Yeah. Hmm. Anyway, they stole a recipe from some poor Amish people.
Right. They're like, look at this.
I mean.
They should have been stoking a fire.
Maybe they were on Rumspringa.
That's, I, I almost went up there. You guys better be on Rumspringa.
You should have got the, is this AC in here?
What is going on in here? I've seen the Netflix documentaries. This is BS.
And they're like, leave us alone, English.
English daddy.
And I'm not English.
Our English daddy.
They're like, you're not even from here.
Well, they could have been from southern Minnesota.
I met Javier.
Oh, Javier, yeah.
No, she's back.
Right. Clearly they're from southern Minnesota.
Clearly they're, clearly they're from here.
Alas, alas.
Harmony.
Yeah.
Well, uh, they did not set, um, um, records for attendance, but it was pretty good attendance. It was over.
Minnesotans like it when it's boiling hot.
1.9 million. Pretty good.
I think it was like the fifth, I heard, fifth highest attended, so.
It's good.
Drive better next year, everybody.
You know what? You dudes, we bought, we bought a, we bought a, we bought a sauna.
Well, you got your hot tub there and now you got a sauna?
Yes.
Oh, that's so exciting.
It's gonna be over after Omenak this weekend.
Yes, okay. Well, it's not installed yet, so.
Oh, dang it.
Next year, we just need you guys to get a cold plunge and we can do a whole.
Yes, it's all, it's all spa.
We have a whole double lot yard with like a ton of snow. So we're gonna do a whole.
You can jump in the Koi pond.
Oh, we can do a whole circuit.
Yeah. No, we're, we're definitely doing it. So, yeah, no, I figured since we got, since we, we are, we are the answer to the question, who the hell buys a hot tub at the state fair? We should also be the answer to who the hell buys a sauna.
We should get a sauna and then we can run down to the lake.
Oh, and your fucking cabin.
And, and a jet ski.
Sorry. Sorry, Gabe, please.
Jenny already said yes.
Jenny said yes, well.
So it's done.
I didn't say no.
You didn't.
Said maybe.
Good lord. Any politics to discuss?
Probably get to work.
Should we just go home?
We have, we have the walls announcement yet?
Yeah.
Post-state fair, do we have the walls decision yet?
Yeah, no.
God, this is so boring.
We'd even heard specifically that Wednesday, which is today, uh, was the day that he was going to announce.
Oh, wait, breaking news.
What?
Just kidding.
Well.
Javier was to spill something that no one knows and not supposed to know.
I was like, you would.
I didn't even know I was spilling the beans back then.
So, okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask a walls question about, uh, kind of our first item here about.
True or false?
About the spe. About the, about the special session, but do you think, now, the prevailing opinion amongst those of us in the political class, though none of us know, none of us know, but the prevailing opinion among most of us is that Walls is not going to be seeking a third term. Do you think that his strident push for the, um, a special session focused on guns and gun safety, knowing, knowing he doesn't have the votes to pass anything, is that trying to like kind of revive something to see if, uh, that catches fire and then he would run for a third term? Or do you think it's not connected to it at all?
I, I think it's more like, I, I, I genuinely think that it's more like he's, uh, okay, assuming we are correct that he's not running, I think it has more to do with like, well, I have nothing to lose, so let's, let's do this, let's get this done. Um, like, so, and I, and I think it's well intentioned on, in, in, in that sense. Um, I think that, uh, it's surprising to me that he would make the announcement before.
Talking to other leadership.
Having legislative conversations, um, because, because I think it, it's an issue that like, apparently we've decided at a country, as a country that like, we're just okay with putting up with dead kids, uh, every school year. Um, and so, uh, nothing ever gets done. So.
So here's why I think you're right, Javier. Um, I think because had he ambitions to run for governor again, he very much would like to see a senate and a house that would be Democrats, right? He would like the days of the trifecta again at some point. And the, some of these votes will have political repercussions that are going to be more difficult for some legislators. And I just think that if he were worried about that, and if he were thinking about Minnesota, uh, specifically Minnesota politics specifically, not, not judging motives at all for the denunciation, um, but that he would have those conversations first and then sort of negotiate a way to a special session where he could make that comment. I think the mere fact, as you said, he has nothing to lose. He just wanted to get something done. He wanted to do something. And so he's doing this. And I, I think that is more proof that he's not running. But I also think the reason that no one knows for sure is because I'm not sure that he's fully decided himself. I don't think he's 1,000% I'm not running.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong.
I, I, I don't know. I, I think, I, I don't think, I'd be shocked if he ran at this point. Um, there's, there's too much speculation and his people would be, I think, more aggressively putting down, swatting down stories about other people wanting to run if he were gonna, if he were gonna run.
And that's, that's kind of, you know, what really kind of pushed me from the, he is definitely running to the, he's most likely not running camp, is that Democrats are talking to me about, well, when he doesn't run, this person might run, or that person. And there's enough of them. It's not like one person, you know, we're hearing Steve Simon, we're hearing, you know, stuff directly from Angie Craig. We're hearing people that are saying the Klobo thing is real. And, you know, other electeds are saying, well, I might think about running for Secretary of State or, you know, so there's almost like amongst the political class, and this could be 100% wrong. But, um, but amongst the political class, it's just more and more and more, almost like a foregone conclusion that he is not going to run for a third term.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, trying not to be cynical and I, I, I understand why he, uh, quickly announced a special session because it feels like we have to do something. And, you know, we can't just sit by passively and wait for a regular session to start in February to at least debate some ideas. Um, but also if something tangible doesn't come out of the effort, you know, what a, might as well do a, might as well run for national office.
But see, I also, like, I, 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 I don't think it was well planned out, but I do think he should do it the way he said he, that I do think they should just open a session and let it, let it go. And I, and every day I would have a press conference saying, here's another day that we don't have gun legislation and just like, just build, build the pressure on it. Um, but, but, but there's a, a, I think a pretty universal recognition, right? That you, that that's too politically risky, da, da, da. And so that's why I think you should do it because it should be, we should be taking every risk to protect children. Um, but, but I don't, but I think the re, because everyone thinks it's too risky, you say, oh, you have to have a deal in, in advance. And we're, we're definitely not going to get a deal in advance.
We're definitely not going to get a deal in advance. Um, well, and, and, and our tone so far, you know, guns, this can, this can go sideways really quickly. Our tone right now is, is good. I like the way we're talking about it. But my, my, my question is, and this is a legitimate question. So in 2003, the DFL trifecta was able to pass red flag laws and, and other things.
2023.
23. I say 2003, sorry, 2023. Um, I sat the doctor this week and he asked me, uh, when something happened and I said 1994 and it was 2024. So anyway.
Did you take that test, the camera woman, man?
I think that, uh, I'm having some trouble. But in any event, um, so they, they passed red flag laws. They passed other things when they had the, the trifecta. And there were some things that they couldn't pass, like, you know, an assault weapons ban. Now, before I let people kind of opine on that, I respect people who say, we're gonna ban guns. Because I think all of these other things kind of play around the edge and they are just kind of doing something, uh, but they're not doing things that actually work. We, you know, in, in, in the denunciation case, the mother could have done something about, uh, about her son, red flag stuff, didn't happen. But the, they're actually saying, we're gonna take these guns and make them, you're never gonna get rid of all of them, but you can get rid of some of them, or at least, you know, a decent amount of them. Uh, I respect that. I don't agree with it. I don't think it's constitutional, even though we, we, you know, we've done it before, uh, 94 to, to 2004, I think it was. Um, um, we've done it before, but I respect people, when people say, I'm gonna, I wanna, uh, I wanna ban guns. Do you think that that is what this would be? Or would it be people saying, we just have to do something when we've done things and now we have to do more things, but not the thing that actually would have a big impact?
So interesting, because the things that we have done, um, red flag laws, which actually frankly, according to significant amount of research, um, on best practices, on what can reduce gun violence, red flag laws, emergency, um, protective orders comes up at the top. But what it does take to the point that you made is it does take someone to, uh, it, this, in the case of denunciation, the mother didn't, uh, and the father, he has, and the friends, but, um.
No, no one flagged it.
No one flagged it.
And it did not have police interaction.
Correct.
So there wasn't a city or county, because those are things that.
They're only as good as the communication and education of the community that needs to, um, act on them. So is this an opportunity for public awareness and education about what people can do? I think so. And so if it's effective, just because a law's passed, doesn't mean it works. It takes a lot of education, um, and understanding of how it works, where people can go, et cetera. And so if this opportunity can raise that, I think it's, it's important. There's other things that we can do around safe storage. Um, there was a, actually Senator Biggs' bill a few years ago around, uh, safe storage. That is a proven mechanism that reduces gun violence and, um, particularly amongst children. And so there are things, very specific, that are research backed. Then I hope we have that conversation. Another piece, though, and I'd like to ask the Republicans about this. I think Lisa Damuth, actually Speaker Damuth, um, plays a very interesting piece of this conversation. One, because anything passed has to be bipartisan, but two, she was a former member of the Recore School Board. And while she wasn't on the school board when the school shooting happened, her kids did go to school there. So I think she brings a very unique perspective to this. And I mean, it's been super, I feel like it's been very political up to this point. Um, but is there substantive things that could happen?
I, I, I mean, is there something that could happen? I mean, no, no. I mean, we're, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about, about constitutional rights, constitutional rights that the four of us don't all agree on. That's fine. I mean, but we, we, you know, people are certainly not willing to let abortion rights be state by state, community by community.
What are you talking about? That's literally what it is.
And then you're, and you're cool with that? You're fine with that?
No, but.
But that's what I'm saying. People aren't cool with it. You're.
But it doesn't matter. It's the law of the land. Abortion is illegal in like, have to have the states, so.
And, and, okay, so it's gonna stay that way, right? You're not gonna fight for it to be something different? Why, why are you doing this?
Why am I doing what?
Why are you arguing with me about, about whether, whether people are okay with, uh, abortion rights being state by state, community by community? It was, it was a, is a pretty factual statement. One, it's not even controversial.
You're, you're particularly referencing, what you mean is that liberals don't like that it's state to state. Is that what you mean?
Well, yeah. I mean, does it matter?
Yeah, it does matter because one's the law of the land, the other's not. Whatever, go on.
All right, no, but no, I mean, okay, so it's, I don't even know where to go from that. People are not okay with that. Uh, the two of them are at this table. One of them is arguing with me about it for some reason, which I don't understand, but I'm missing something. But in any event, why are we saying that some people are willing to say some rights can be, uh, you know, tempered and, uh, and, uh, and diminished in, in different states and they're not saying it in others? I don't understand why we're, we are willing to be so cavalier about this when we know, all right, fine, someone else talk.
But I don't wanna, you, I don't wanna lose your point, though.
Well, the point is, it's disingenuous to say that some rights have to be.
Are you saying that it needs to be a national conversation? It has to be a federal law?
I'm saying that people, the same people, yes.
Same argument. You make the argument for this, that it should be national, and you make the argument for this one, that it should be state by state.
I don't think anyone's making the argument that it should be state by state. We just feel so helpless at the national level. So we're looking at our states and local governments and what they can do. And that has been a trend for the last decade of like cities that say, well, the federal government isn't gonna do it, so we're gonna test it. And sometimes it doesn't hold up in courts and sometimes it does.
Well, my statement was not meant to be anything that some, I thought anyone would disagree with, so whatever. Um, we're talking about constitutional rights. We're, we're, we're saying, well, let's just, let's, 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 you know, pass bill, pass laws that limit people's constitutional rights and then just see what happens. And that's dangerous. And it's why it's not gonna happen here. And, and, and for, for the governor to say, we're gonna have a, a, a special session when, to do things that he doesn't have Democrat, enough Democrat votes to do.
Right.
Um, is, 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 is taking a tragedy and trying to use it to do things that would not have impacted the tragedy itself, whether it was Recore, whether it was denunciation, you know, playing around the edges, um, and taking away people's constitutional rights is not something that was, that would have impacted what happened, um, in Minneapolis.
And you, Allison, you asked the question, like, could something get done here? Well, maybe, but not when it's done like this, right? Because I understand, uh, the passion. I do. Um, but like to not have a conversation, not just with the Democrat leadership, but not to have any conversation with Alyssa Damuth, with not sitting down with her and saying, okay, you know what happened. You understand Recore. Like, can we talk about what's possible? Instead, just running and just going out there and saying, well, I'm having a special session and I'm calling it no matter what. Well, then no, I don't think anything can happen. I don't know if anything can happen, but I know with that, nothing will. So not just from a political standpoint and from his own party, but to not have a conversation with Speaker Damuth, who's not shown herself to be unreasonable, has not shown herself, who certainly has a personal stake in this in many ways, uh, and a, and a very deep personal understanding of this. It just, like, then the answer is, no.
With all of the, I'd have to sit on the pen and paper, with all of the special elections that are about to happen and, and going to happen, where are we numbers wise, senate and house?
So the special election for, right now, we're 67, 66 in the House. That special election is September 16th. And so.
And that is for the Melissa Horton seat.
Melissa's seat. Um, that would bring things back to 67, 67 until, um, uh, but it's still 33, 32 in the senate right now because with the, yeah.
Woodbury and Buffalo.
And Buffalo. And you need 34 votes to pass anything in the senate. So it also forces a bipartisan.
And 68 in the House.
Yes. Um, so with the math right now, the senate doesn't, the DFL does not have an opportunity to pass something without a Republican, um, until those two special elections, which are actually on November 4th. Um, but if, uh, Representative Hemmanson Jaeger wins the special election on November 4th for the Woodbury seats, that will cause another special election for the House and it will have to be, go back to 67.
But not until they're sworn in in February, correct?
Correct.
Cause she would have to vacate her seat, which will not happen until she's sworn in.
Until she's sworn in. Yeah.
Couldn't she resign? She could resign.
But then she will have this like, I mean, she will have legislative pay and other things would have a cap, so.
Curtis Johnson. Actually, he couldn't resign. He never won.
He never actually won.
I mean, I, I think the thing that is depressing about all of this, right, is that, to, to your point earlier, Brian, about the, about the constitutional questions here, is that there's no doubt, there, there are a few things are, do we know to be true. When there was an assault weapons ban in this country, there was a marked decline in, um, mass shooting events. And when that assault ban's weapon, that assault weapons ban was allowed to expire, those, uh, there was an explosion of, of those that we've, that we've never come out of and probably never will. Um, it is also true that, um, that I, I don't, I don't think that same assault weapons ban would survive this Supreme Court anyway. Um, and, uh, I, I think, and I think that's wholly wrong. And I think that to your, to your point before, right, that the logic of like, let localities decide, which, uh, we're told is fine for, when it comes to reproductive rights, does not apply when it comes to, uh, to, you know, being able to have a right to, to, to live, um, uh, and, and without being shot at. Um, so it's, uh, we're, we're just in this particular conundrum because the, the reality is, is that this is, this is a choice that we don't have to continue to make, but we continue to make it every time. Um, and there's, there's, like, there's all this, this, this stuff that always happens about the shooter, about like who the shooter is and who like, and, and all these things. The one thing that all of these, that every single one of these murderers has in common is what is in their hands. Um, and that is the one thing that this country has decided cannot be talked about. So let, so dead children unfortunately is just our status quo that no one is willing to do anything about.
Well, interestingly, so in 1994, um, I was in college. Where were you, Allison?
I was alive.
Okay, that's good. So in 2000, in, in.
Wow.
In 1994, I was, I was in college and my. In 1994, I was, I was in college and my internship was with Congressman Jim Ramstead. Got, yeah, R I P, R I P to a very good man. In 1994, Jim Ramstead was one of, I think, 11 Republicans who broke with Republicans to vote with Bill Clinton and vote for the crime bill, which ultimately had the assault weapons ban in it. So essentially my internship was fielding angry phone calls for, for, for a summer. So that was, that was something that definitely left a mark because it was, it was back when people would do things like that. Obviously, I don't personally believe that that was the right move, but it was when people, you know, because part of why he wanted to do that is because that bill also had the Jacob Wetterling law language in it, which was something that Jim Ramstead was very, very much interested in seeing passed.
And in the Minnesota State House, when former Representative Dario Anselmo was in the House, one of his biggest things is gun control. And yes, he is a Republican from now very blue district, which is ZDINA. But he sat on the House floor with Peggy Flanagan and Ilhan Omar, at the time representatives in protest because he lost his mother to gun violence. And so, does, does anyone remember the Chris Rock standup about bullet control? That's what we need, just make the bullets like $5,000. That would really help us with our.
I'm liking this.
Like we can't, you know, it's like ban high capacity magazines, ban, ban, ban. Frankly too, we have to talk about the fact that you can like print guns now in 3D printer. Like we are so evolved and advanced in the technology to get guns that I think we just have to have a more real estate conversation about solutions in this new reality that we live in in 2025. But I am still for bullet control or really high prices for bullets.
I, I was, I was shocked when I read some of the translations of, of the shooter's manifesto, for lack of a better word, where, where they said, I'm scared of good guys with guns. I think a school is my best chance at not being shot at. And then also said, annunciation seems like a great choice. It's very progressive. So I doubt if any, even one of the adults is armed.
Yeah.
It helps that I went to that school, so I know the layout, blah, 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 blah. That, that really infuriated me that, I mean, and we know people pick, people pick their targets for lots of different reasons, whether it's to make the worst impact or to, to, to get the most attention for it. But this was an admission that he went to a gun free zone because then he wouldn't have to worry about being shot by a good guy with a gun. That really, really, really upset me on top of everything else that had happened.
It's also that, that, the, 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 the killer also had all this stuff about, you know, with, with like the, the name of the Christchurch.
Oh, he had multiple mass shooters on, he was so, this was, this was an obsession, clearly.
It's an obsession.
Yeah.
And he wanted.
And he used the verbiage that the media uses around, you know, it, it, it's so sick.
Just quickly, a couple of good points from a friend of the show, Shannon Watson. First of all, she said Scott Johnson, Scott Jensen, who ran for governor, but was a state GOP state senator, was also a Republican, willing to talk about guns. He was until he got the, until he was going for the endorsement for the GOP.
Senator, Senator Jensen was willing to talk about guns as a physician and a.
And then the other question that Shannon put out there is could, would either of those November four special winners be sworn in early? Because they're specials. Yes, both of them would likely, but so that'll be sometime in November, maybe, because both those seats are empty. So they can be sworn in early and would likely be. I was sworn in, like the week, I remember, or maybe the month before, when I started, we started, I had a special election. I got elected in like a November election and then sessions started in February. So I got sworn in in January. So I did get, I assume they'll be sworn in early, but it doesn't happen. It likely wouldn't happen until the end of November into December and that's not going to be a special. So, I mean, that's not going to be a time for a special session. I would assume you'll call this earlier than that.
And how, how Jensen.
Hard for me to make all those points, but yes, they'll be sworn in early, not early enough.
How Jensen described his position to me was that he had had a brother with mental illness and that his brother ultimately took his own life. And Jensen's opinion, at least at the time that he spoke to me about it, was that his brother should not have been allowed to have a gun. So, and, and that was very humanizing, you know, because Scott Jensen and I did not have a very good relationship. And when I told him that I was unlikely to support him, you know, he asked me out for a beer, which we did do. And he told me why some of his positions are his positions. And they didn't necessarily make me want him to go as far as he did, but it did humanize and make me understand. Because, because in.
In theory, maybe red flag laws would be something that he might have.
That he might.
I don't want to.
That's what the definition, I mean, that, that would be the thing that would.
That would have been the thing. But we can't even have, the, the debate that we're having right here, we can't even seem to have, like with elected officials who are actually in a position to, 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 to do something about it. And that is something, I don't know if that's what Allison's point was earlier, but that's something that I do think has a ton of value. Let the people who agree with something, you know, stand up and explain their opinions. Let the people who are against something stand up and state their opinions and then, you know, let's debate it in the town square. I have zero problem with that. That should happen, but we can't even have that debate. We just have us versus them, whoever the us and them are. And once upon a time, you took a controversial vote, you went back to your district and you explained it. There's no explaining these things anymore. Yeah. So Governor Pritzker of my home state of Illinois, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, Governor Pritzker and the, the mayor of Chicago, the mayor of Chicago, who says that, that the guns in Chicago are coming from red states. So whatever. But Javier, you had, you had put an article in our, in our, our shared feed, kind of about what is happening in Chicago or about to happen or might happen.
Well, the, the, the important thing that happened is that the district court ruled that in, that the, that, that Trump violated the Posse Comitatus Act. Does, does anyone here speak Italian, not Italian, Latin?
No.
Do you study Latin?
Oh, I mean, obviously romance languages.
Yeah, same, same. But I, is posse like a Latin word? I didn't.
Let me use my pocket computer.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, they, they ruled that it was a violation of the, of the, the, the law that says that US military cannot engage in policing in the homeland and within the United States and against American citizens. And so they were able to very easily show that they were engaging in things like, like if, if the, if the National Guardsman is detaining someone, that is a police function. Because a National Guard person detaining someone, that person should be a, on foreign soil. And so that, so that's, it's, it's not a nationwide injunction. It's, it applies only to, to Los Angeles and it gives them time to, to appeal. But it's the first like formal decision we've had that, 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 that act has been violated. What, from my understanding, Trump's ability to send National Guard into Chicago is hampered, one, by that, by, by the fact that they can't do policing. Like, so, so the, ostensibly in Los Angeles, how they explained it was they said that they were there to enforce federal immigration laws. And that's why they could get around, that was the loophole of Posse Comitatus. But, but they were able to show in trial, the, the California was able to show in trial that in fact, they were doing more than, than enforcing immigration law, that they were actually arresting people and, and doing policing duties. For like in DC, in DC, it's different because the, the DC National Guard, the president is the head of the DC National Guard.
DC is its own thing.
So that's, it's, that's a different thing. But like, but so, so with Chicago, you'd have to have, I mean, it doesn't matter. They're going to do it anyway and no one, and, and no Republican is going to stand up to them. But, but, but legally, there's no legal justification for, for doing it without there being a, without there being federal law that they need to enforce. But this is, this is what's going to happen next year, right around October in, in Democratic cities across the country. It's, you know, fun.
The term posse originates from Latin, meaning the power of the county.
The power of the county?
Yep.
Wow. See?
Yeah, I'm going to sprinkle that in.
What about Comitatus then? So that, does the whole phrase mean power of the county?
Committee?
Comitatus?
Yes, sorry, yes, the whole phrase.
The whole phrase means power of the county.
Power of the county.
So power of the local.
Power of the, interesting.
Come to learn as well.
That's why.
Are you not entertained? Are you not learning?
Join our Patreon.com slash Wrong About Everything Podcast.
Is Patreon, is that from the, the Latin?
Patron is.
Meaning give me money?
Patron. Yeah, so, so this, so this whole question about like whether they're going to go into, into Chicago is just, it's so bizarre because the, the, the thing, the, the, I think Democrats are like shockingly being stupid about something occasionally that happens. The main thing being, like, if you think about what's hap, what, what happened in Los Angeles, what is happening right now in Washington DC? Our nation's capital is under military occupation. How many Democrats are talking about that? Not many Democrats. That they're talking about like invading a Democratic city because it's a Democratic city, let's just be clear. How many people are talking about that other than Governor Pritzker? And, and you know why? Because Democratic messaging consultants have told people like, well, you know, people don't like crime. Well, duh. Like, and so the, like that you, so you, you'll look like you're defending, you're, you're defending criminals. If we can't figure out a way to defend, like in, in Washington DC, ostensibly it was like, because big balls got, got beaten up. That's, that was what caused the whole thing, you know, the, the kid.
The Doge.
The Doge kid. In that instance, he was beaten up. The people who beaten up were immediately arrested, like within, like my understanding was within minutes. So policing working is the explanation for why this, why this is supposedly needed. And, and, and people are not speaking up because like apparently we just have to go fully fascist before anyone will be like, oh, 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 I should have spoken up sooner about the gas chambers, but sorry.
Well, and not to.
My bad.
And not to be flippant about it, but the Second Amendment exists because you have to fight your own government. And, you know, if, if we are afraid that our government.
Well regulated militia.
Which means different things now than it is then. But, but yes, but that is the purpose of it. When people say you don't need this for hunting or, it's not what the purpose of it is. The purpose is in case we have to raise, raise up arms against our own government. And so that's, that's the purpose of it. Now, obviously everyone had muskets once upon a time and now the government has nuclear bombs and that's, that's different. But that is why we have the Second Amendment. In, in other news, no, no good deed goes unpunished. So Rudy Giuliani, guys remember him?
No.
He just got.
He's been discharged from a New Hampshire hospital after suffering broken vertebrae when a vehicle he was riding in was struck from behind at high speed over the weekend. What had happened was Giuliani was driving southbound on Interstate 93 in Manchester when they were flagged down by a woman on the side of the road who said she was the victim of domestic violence. Giuliani rendered assistance, contacted 911 and remained on the scene with her until responding officers arrived to ensure her safety. All of that is good. He then got in his car, was struck from behind and fractured his thoracic vertebrae, had lacerations, contusions and injuries to his left arm and lower leg. So.
It was the weirdest press release I've, it was so like descriptive of his heroic act and then.
Well, well, this is what, like, like everything we know about it is how, is his description of it. And given who it is, let's, let's just say he got hit. Everything else, everything else is.
Well, but the woman and law enforcement and the driver were in attendance. He has witnesses to what happened. So we know what happened.
These are not, these are not their statements, they're his statements.
His, his press release.
Right, but they could easily, easily law enforcement could come out of the woman could come out and say, no, no, I was, I was just trying to cross the street and he got out and was trying like, like, that's not what happened. No one's refuted his, this version of the story.
No, I'm just commenting on his lack, you know. It was in line with his Four Seasons.
I do worry about his health. I don't understand, he's never looked healthy.
I do not worry about Rudy Giuliani's health at all.
He has not been, well, and just reminds me of, I can't remember which comedian said it, I apologize, but they said, trying to explain to children that Rudy Giuliani used to be a very respected figure is like trying to explain to people that OJ Simpson used to be good at football.
Yeah.
Correct, accurate. The analogy is correct.
Your analogy is correct.
All right. Plugs?
Sure, well, you can catch Brian and I Tuesdays on the BS Podcast. And, oh, oh, stop, just stop. Nobody likes it. Nobody likes it when you do it. And then you can catch Javier and me.
Brian and me.
This Friday, Javier and, and me will be on the.
On Almanac.
Almanac.
Oh, I didn't know you were going to be on too.
Yeah, I just.
Javier and I.
I want you to shut it.
Mankato State right there.
So catch us live at seven o'clock.
It's really very easy.
On Fridays, I don't want to hear you guys, no one wants to hear you guys. Anyway, Fridays at seven o'clock live, or you can catch us all weekend, they do a recording of Almanac, so tune in.
Yes.
How does, how was Moth?
Oh, it was, it was lovely. It was, it was really, it was really great. I am going to be hosting the Moth Grand Slam, October 22nd.
The big daddy, hosting the big daddy.
Yes. I'll also be hosting Special Moth at Gustavus Adolphus on October 7th in whatever town that's in.
St. Peter.
St. Peter, St. Peter. Yeah, I knew that, I totally knew that.
It's a Lutheran school in a Catholic town.
Yeah. I, and I forgot, I was told what the theme was, but I don't remember. But it's always, they have a, they have a Nobel.
It's grammar.
They have a Nobel Week or, or Celebration there that they do every year, where they bring in Nobel Prize winners.
And they're bringing in you?
None, and, and then, so the Moth does a special thing. And then, so I'm hosting a Moth with the same theme of the Nobel, of the Nobel Festival that year.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, so October 7th at Gustavus Adolphus, you can get tickets online at themoth.org. And, and the Grand Slam, October 27th. I don't think those are for sale yet, but they will be soon enough. And yeah, and, oh, look, and then again in November, November 24th.
Well, if we're going that far out, I will be performing comedy at the Rusty Bumblebee, October 17th in Blaine, Minnesota. I was there last year as well and Javier and Amy.
I missed that one.
Javier and Amy were there. I think Gabe, Gabe was there too. Gabe, Gabe closed the show, so I'll be back there on the 17th.
Cool.
I am, as a burgeoning, burgeoning public television star like the rest of you, I did Almanac last Friday, but because it was a very Friday night of a, of Labor Day weekend, if you missed it, you can see it on TPT's website. We did have a, a debate about, about guns, so.
Tpt.org backslash Almanac. And this week it was Eric Escala's birthday. Happy birthday, Eric.
Oh, friend of the podcast.
Yeah.
Friend of the podcast and, and I can say this now, a Patreon. So, for those of you listening, so just so you know, Eric Escala from TPT's Almanac, he is not a dick. Don't you want to be like him?
I, I always knew.
I always knew.
A style icon and not a dick.
Yes.
A broadcasting, Minnesota broadcasting legend and also not a dick.
So, do you, do you know, is Jimmy Choo's, are Jimmy Choo's the shoes with the red soul?
No, that's Christian Louboutin.
Christian Louboutin, okay, Christian Louboutin. So my barber says, is it, because I'm on Almanac, he's like, oh my God, I'm, I have a group of friends, we're all obsessed with Kathy Werzer. And so there's a group of gay men who want to do a GoFundMe so that she can buy, so they could buy her a Louboutin, Louis, Louis Button?
Louboutin.
Louboutin, Louboutin, oh, it's L O B U.
L O U B I T A N.
Yeah, because they want to see her with the red soul on the, on the couch.
Carrie Bradshaw is a big fan.
They, they make a nice flat. I can see Kathy rocking a Louboutin flat. I can't see her in a stiletto.
She likes her raffies.
Yes. Yeah. Well, I shared that with Kathy. I don't think she was as impressed as I was that she has, oh, then I, but then I told, I told the producer Carrie that it was like, I feel like Carrie, I feel like Kathy didn't appreciate as much that she has a gay fan club. And she goes, oh, she's been a gay icon forever.
She was like, it's not new news, yeah.
Like, oh, well then, I guess I'm late to the show. I defy you, I defy you to find anyone who doesn't like Kathy Werzer.
Oh, no, of course.
She is amazing.
Yes.
Spinks and thanks.
I will go. So we just learned, so this is, my, I'll do is just one double spank on the same topic. on the same topic, which is vaccines and, good lord. So Florida has become the first state to eliminate all vaccine mandates from schools. And the, the, the health person, the speaking at a news conference outside Tampa with Governor DeSantis, Surgeon General of Florida, Joseph Ladapo, said that every vaccine mandate, quote, "is wrong and drips with disdain and slavery," and called the rollback the right thing to do. So if you're like, apparently, what did you say earlier? It was like, we've had it too good.
I'm saying, we've, we've had it too good for too long. So it clearly isn't the vaccines that are working. It's something else.
Because, so here's the, here's the deal, right? There are very small babies who can't get vaccines yet because you, you have to wait until a certain age. And so older, slightly older kids being vaccinated protects newborns from diseases like rubella, like whooping cough. My neighbor, Summer, her, her daughter, while she was our neighbor, almost died from whooping cough, a completely present preventable disease because she was too young to be vaccinated. And some jackass in her, in her preschool or somewhere she was, was not vaccinated. And so she got whooping cough and almost, almost died. So congratulations, Florida. Your, babies will die because of this. And, and not to be outdone, CDC, or rather, Health Secretaries, God, I can't even get that out of my-
HHS Secretary.
HHS Secretary. RFK Junior has, has gotten rid of the CDC Director, who was just confirmed on last month, July 31st. And all over again, vaccines. So, you know, Florida, here we come. All of us, all of us are Florida now.
I love taking medical advice from not a doctor.
It's gonna be-
He's not even a doctor.
I, I'm genuinely wondering if the medical associations are gonna start putting out their own temporary guidelines for people who believe in science to, to follow.
The American, whatever, for obstetrics, has started doing that because of.
Yeah, just awful. But, that's it.
Okay. All right, who's next?
Hey, can I just say something? I didn't mean anything by that. I did, I honestly, like, I didn't mean-
It caught me off guard. I apologize if I overreacted.
I, I honestly didn't mean anything by it. I was just, I, I was just like, for me, it was just point of information, like, no, we don't have that anymore. We, like, that's all I meant.
And, and my point was simply that, there are people that argue that that's bad.
Yeah.
So, you know what? That's the purpose of this.
The purpose of the podcast.
My thing is, we guys showing how it's supposed to be done. His whole point is not to totally agree on everything. It's to disagree and then come back to friends.
Javier and I are fine.
Okay. All right. So my spank and think are along the same line as well. My think is to Vice President JD Vance, who was in Minneapolis today, visiting with his wife, Annunciation. I think it's very important.
His wife, Osha.
Yep, Osha came along. And I think it's very important, there have been times with this administration where I feel like in times when we need to come together and have a show of support, that there have been petty moments. And this, thankfully, thank God, was not one of them. I think it was appropriate for the Vice President and right for him to visit. I am glad that he did. I think his wife, Osha, as well, for attending. I thought that was very beautiful. So they are thanked. My spank is along the same lines. There were protesters there. And I get it, you could not like him. You can have your moments. Save him for political rallies. Save them for political speeches. This was not a moment to protest and make a political moment out of this. That was not why he was here. He was coming here to pay respects from the administration, and he should have been respected as such. So those that protested, well, you have every right to do it. You, I also have every right to spank you for it.
All right. I have a, starting with a spethink, and also goes back to why I call myself the cultural correspondent, is because of my favorite podcast outside of this one is Lost Culturistas, which is hosted by Matt Rogers and Bowen Yang. And Bowen Yang, who's been-
That is a great podcast.
Yes. And it infuses culture into, into our lives. And I love it. And they celebrate it. And politics is culture these days. But Bowen Yang, obviously, has been on SNL for quite a few years. I think 2019, it was, he was announced as a new cast member and Shane Gillis was announced as a new cast member. And I think very publicly was then fired as some previous jokes that he had made that were seen as distasteful and needed to be canceled, were out. And, and, you know, they were distasteful towards, towards Asians, towards trans people, towards LGBTQ. And he had apologized for them previously. And, but Bowen's name kept being brought up, that Bowen was behind the effort to get, make sure that he wasn't on the show. And it came out this week that, that he wasn't. In fact, he was not really consulted at all. And he, before Shane Gillis was, was dismissed from SNL, they spoke, one on, you know, they called each other and they talked about it. And Bowen was okay with it. And Shane was okay with it. And I just, we, I don't, we just jumped to cancel people so quickly. And the point that Bowen Yang made was, we are, we have multiple dimensions as humans and as people. And, you know, if he was unapologetic and that was his, that was his thing, I think, like, that would be a different conversation. But I just appreciated them sharing that story because they both felt that they were used to prove a point.
And they were.
And can I, can I say something about, because, because who did the canceling there? Was the network.
Was the network, not Lauren.
Not, 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 not the, like, and, but, but, but it's, it's like liberals-
Yes.
Who get, who get, who get like called, can't, like, people canceling, whatever. And in fact, I think the better, more progressive thing to, for it to happen is what you said.
Yeah.
Is like, when you have redemption, you freaking accept it.
Yep. I mean, to me, like, progressivism is about grace and redemption. And again, I wanna be clear, his jokes were offensive. And if he was unapologetic about it, it'd be different. But he, it isn't. And he's gone on to have an amazing standup career and a hilarious show on Netflix. He's a hilarious person.
Watch, watch 40 years of SNL, or what are you on, 50 years now?
Fifty years.
Like, the characters that have been done, super, super offensive. And like, some of them are very hard to watch. There was a time. And then you move on and like, you get funnier.
Comedy is inherently offensive. Don Rickles, I mean, come on.
That's literally what this show's about.
Yeah, comedy and offending.
Breaking boundaries.
What did, what did Daniel Tosh say? Of course, I crossed the line. That's how I know that there still is one.
Yeah. So, so this was more of a spethink and just more of an observation. My think, my big, big think is to my socialist daddy, Donald J. Trump, who is applying state capitalism in the negotiation with Intel. Intel was awarded tens of millions of dollars through the CHIPS Act to bring their manufacturing back, back to the US. They've started to construct facilities in Arizona, but they have yet to receive the appropriation. And essentially, what Trump did is, he said, if you're gonna get all this taxpayer dollars, the taxpayers should have a stake in the company, which is frankly, a hybrid between socialism and capitalism, and how the Chinese government runs their country. So Bernie Sanders and Elizabeth Warren have cheered this. Rand Paul is losing his mind. I, I have personal feelings about this because, like, is Intel the best company to do this for? Not sure. But it is, it's interesting to see, you know, the leader of the Republican Party with such an antithesis to free market capitalism, and frankly, no consistent direction, which, which we all know, but this one was.
We've been saying that for 12 years.
Yeah.
The whole time. The whole time, not a Republican.
No, he knows, he knows. He's a dealmaker.
He is a dealmaker.
And this time, he's gonna get some money back for the American taxpayer, because the theory that we subsidize businesses and it trickles down back to the economy, he doesn't think works. So, thanks, Donald Trump.
Well, he finally found something that Republicans will criticize him about. So there's at least that.
Well, one well.
Oh, no, I, I got a lot of my facts today, but from the Cato Institute.
All right, good job, Cato Institute.
Twitter was definitely mixed. All right. So, so my spank is gonna be to not friend of the program, Andrew Zimmern. Gabe, I don't know if you have the, the clip ready to go.
Wait, are we expanding my beef?
We are. Here we go.
Food at the Minnesota State Fair, the Great Minnesota Get Together, is easiest question I've ever been asked. The footlong hot dogs at Speedy's Family's stand on the corner of Karnes and Nelson. Single best food item in America, hands down.
What?
Well-done onions and crabs.
Not only did he just say it's the best, that a footlong hot dog is the best food at the state capital, he then triples, quadruples 100 times downs, saying it's the best food in America. It's a freaking hot dog.
Who paid him?
Somebody.
Big hot dog.
Big, big footlong.
Big hot dog. So this podcast has had their beef with Andrew Zimmern. I knew him when he was, when he was Chef Andrew. He was married to the daughter of a Republican member. And he'd come to the, to the, to the State Office Building when I was staffed there. And he was just a dick to people. And then Javier.
Yeah, then, then he got mad at me because I said that his frozen hot chocolate was just chocolate ice cream, which it freaking is. It's just chocolate. And he sent his Twitter followers after me. He went, he went, he went apeshit. I will say one thing, and I hate to admit this, that beard looks good on him.
Yeah, looks good in the mirror.
Yeah. But screw you anyway, Andrew.
Yeah, so that-
The beef continues.
The beef.
You handsome jackass.
Because that was something stupid to say. And I assume he was paid to say it. And it better have been handsomely, because Chef Andrew would never say that.
Shouldn't there be, I mean, I hope he wasn't paid for it, because that would be a very, like, even influencers, like-
Right.
Hashtag ad.
Have gotten used to saying, saying, hey, this is, this is sponsored content, or it's very clearly sponsored content. If that's sponsored content-
Maybe he just really thinks it's delicious.
Hashtag spam.
Then, then we should doubt everything he's ever told you, including that there's such a thing as frozen hot chocolate.
And that Lucky Cricket was good.
It's just frozen chocolate.
It wasn't.
It's no longer hot.
Not even controversial. These are not controversial.
Sorry, that was a sore spot. He did apologize for his incredibly insensitive comments to the American Asian community.
What did Bowen Yang think about those comments?
I don't know, but hopefully I can be enough of a culture correspondent to someday ask him.
Oh, there you go.
Get it.
Is that your long game? That's your long game. I like it. All right.
Dream big, dream high.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna surprise everybody. My think is to Rosie O'Donnell.
Oh, Lord.
If you can believe it.
My childhood icon.
So Rosie O'Donnell apologized.
Are you sure you're not a lesbian?
Yeah.
I am so sure. I would if I could, but I can't.
I know, I know. You'd, I'd be, I'd be setting you up left and right.
So Rosie O'Donnell apologized after falsely claiming Minneapolis church shooter was Republican and a MAGA supporter. I'm thanking her because if you say something dumb, you should apologize for it. She said something dumb, she apologized for it. Let her be-
You know what? I appreciate that. That's what the show's about.
In this instance, let her be a role model for us all. And with that, I am GOP strategist and Twin City Sugar, Brian McDaniel.
I am former Republican Senate Majority Leader, Amy Koch.
I am Minneapolis cultural correspondent, Allison Nessie.
I am Democratic strategist and the Puerto Rican heat, Javier Mourinho.
And we are Wrong About Everything.
Take us away, Gabe.
Thanks for a good show, guys.